I have 5:30, I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for tuning into tonight's work session. Work sessions are conducted to provide city council with introductory information, to have opportunities to provide staff guidance, and to facilitate initial conversations on a topic. No votes are taken. As such, there is not an opportunity provided for members of the community to provide comments or ask questions during a work session. Those interested in providing comments to the city council can do so during the regular meeting at 7 o'clock PM. All right, up next, we have a new employee to welcome. Lynn, Brent?
Yeah, Lynn, do you want to come up? So, very happy to introduce and excited Lynn Shutey as the city's new and very first finance director. I will get this out of the way, Lynn, because you'll probably hear it, but this will spare the city council from hearing me do budget projections that go up 33%.
That's what I was alluding to earlier about the issues with math.
They asked me to do some quick math and I failed.
We can get you a link to the work session if you're interested in seeing it.
Lynn comes to us from the way of Watertown. So Lynn, if you just want to introduce yourself to the council, I've added.
You've got to hit the...
It's a push button.
The green light is on now. My name is Lynn Shutey. I originally grew up in Corcoran, Minnesota. I went to Delano High School, married my high school sweetheart, and we have three children, three girls, 15, 14, and 10. And we now live in Watertown, where we've resided for the last almost seven years. And they all go to Watertown Mayor High School, or High School, Middle School, and Elementary School. And I enjoy living there. And again, I used to work in corporate accounting. I found my way into city government about five years ago and have really enjoyed it. So I'm really excited to work for the city of Carver and also use my financial background, which is what I went to school for. So I enjoy coffee, exercising, sleeping, and DIY projects. And I hate being cold and winter driving.
And you went to the Harvard of the Midwest, I understand?
The Harvard of the Midwest.
Saint Cloud State?
Yes, I did.
I'm like, I'm not aware of that, but yes, I did go to Saint Cloud State, yes. Some people do think that.
Yes.
Well, welcome, Lynn.
Thank you.
I think Brent was kind enough to give you a heads up about my adoration of the game Two Truths and Lie as a way to meet new folks.
Yes.
Okay. Gave a look, like...
Harry's going to introduce himself and I didn't tell him that?
Oh, well. Hopefully you can text him real quickly. Harry, you're on deck, apparently. Sorry that Erin didn't tell you that I'd like to play Two Truths and Lie. So you have about 30 seconds to come up with Two Truths and Lie. Go ahead.
All right, so I have been to the Super Bowl. I studied abroad in London for a semester. And I was married in the Riviera Maya, Mexico.
Okay, so we all play along. Harry, you're allowed to play along. We show which finger we, which, how many fingers we think is the lie. So not many folks think you've been to a Super Bowl. Which one's the lie?
I actually did not study abroad in London, so...
Saint Cloud State's got a great program abroad.
Yeah, I know.
All right, well, thank you for indulging us. I'd really like to get to know folks a little bit better and I think that's the best, quickest way of doing it.
It's very fun. Well, it's great to meet all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, up next, number three, the connection fee waiver concept slash affordable housing.
Sorry, can I back you up once and introduce Harry?
You may.
Thank you. I'm going to talk really slow so he can still think about Two Truths and Lie. So Harry Davis will be filling in for me while I'm on maternity leave. So he works for Bolton Mank, highly regarded by Dan and Erin. So he'll be responsible for running development projects, city council, planning commission. So Harry, do you mind introducing yourself? Hopefully that gave you enough time.
And Harry, truly, it's an at-will game of Two Truths and Lie. If not tonight, if you'd rather prepare for it, if you want to completely not do it, that's fine as well.
I'm happy to partake.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so my name is Harry Davis. I'm a planner with Bolton Mank. I've been doing what I would say current planning, planning services, either working directly for cities or as a consultant for about seven years. I'm pretty familiar with kind of the ins and outs. I'm somewhat new to Minnesota. My wife and I moved here about two years ago. Been very quickly getting caught up on all things Minnesotan. And, yeah. Any questions?
Any questions for Harry?
Where are you from?
I'm originally from Indiana, but I've recently moved to Minnesota from Arkansas.
All right. Harry, if you're ready, and again, no pressure, but we could jump right into Two Truths and Lie.
Sure. My first lie is that I have a parachutist license.
Wait, you have what?
My second... Yeah, so that I could jump out of a plane by myself.
Okay.
The second is that I have spent two months in Southeast Asia on a study abroad. And my third one is that I hold a master's degree from a country that is not the US.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Harry, you can't see the room, but I would say it's absolutely evenly split. Everybody, nobody has a good read. There's no overwhelming majority. Which one is the lie?
The lie is the parachutist license.
Oh, all right. Is that a thing?
Did you hear him saying my first lie is the parachute? He gave it away pretty quick.
All right, well, Harry, welcome aboard. It's nice to meet you. Thanks for indulging me. And we look forward to working with you this summer while Erin is out with her new addition.
Awesome. Looking forward to it.
Yeah. All right, now with that, let's talk about the connection.
I have a question for Lynn. What Super Bowl did you go to?
I don't know the number, but it was Jacksonville.
Who played?
The Patriots and the...
Other team that lost?
Eagles.
Okay. She didn't go see the Packers.
I just know I have to say this way. I don't remember anything else. Home Cartney was the...
Well, there you go.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. At long last, connection fee waiver concept in affordable housing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are revisiting the Housing Action Plan with a fee waiver concept, so I'll talk you through some information. We'll open it up for discussion and then discuss next steps. So the next steps that we're going to ask you to consider tonight through our discussion, let us know if you need additional information, if you feel like we're at a spot that this could go to a regular meeting, or if you're not interested. So a wide range of options that we can work through together. So you'll recall the Housing Action Plan. We worked on this largely this past fall and over the winter. The council formally adopted it as a city policy on January 18th. So through that policy, we learned a lot from the CDA, the workshop that we had with the Carver County Community Development Agency. So it's a lot of facts on the first couple of pages. Gets us all thinking in shared language, which was something that we wanted to work on collectively, making sure when we said workforce housing, it meant the same thing across the board. So page one of the Housing Action Plan is largely fact-related, where we started, what we learned, some of that information. And then page two was things that we want to do moving forward. So one of the sections was tools. I know the mayor and I shared the same sentiment that we felt like these tools were missing and what's next and what are we supposed to do with them. So this is the what's next. So we're having this discussion tonight to explore one of these tool ideas that we can move forward with. So the tool tonight is reduction in sewer and water connection charges if a developer can demonstrate effective affordable housing and meet requirements set by the city. So included in the packet tonight was a draft policy of a fee waiver rebate concept, as well as these slides. So the information in that policy would need to be met for a developer to be able to apply for this rebate program. So let's talk through that one-page document, get into some of the nitty-gritty. Dave and I worked on it pretty extensively, so if you have questions, feel free to let either one of us know. So the concept tonight is for residential projects only. So we typically think that it will be workforce or senior housing. I think senior housing falls out of the affordable conversation a lot just because it's not the first thing that you think of when you think affordable, but senior housing is often considered here. And we're talking about city fees, so the city sewer and water fee, city only. So you know that we have several other fees that are collected at the time of building permit. So it doesn't consider things like waiving the building permit fee or waiving any other fee. It's just sewer and water connections. So as part of the program, if the developer can demonstrate affordable housing, the city council would review their application. So they would come to you through the planning process to say, "I can offer 17 units at 30%. Can we work through this rebate program? What's your appetite for it?" Something that is really important to this program is that affordability would need to be guaranteed for 20 years. So a developer can't come in, get a deal for one year, and then flip all the units to being higher profit margins for them. So 20 years required. We would have reporting and recording that would be required. So the agreement would be recorded against the property. So what to remember with that is that it stays with the property, not the owner. So if the building changes hands, the agreement stays with the building, doesn't walk with the developer. The examples we're going to walk through are tiered based on affordability. So the more affordable a product, the bigger the rebate you'd be able to access. So we'll talk through some of that with some graphics. I've added a slide, just FYI. We'll talk through Carverage specifically, what that example would have looked like if this program would have been available. And the maximum waiver for any project would be $250,000. So it doesn't matter if they have 100 units that are affordable. If it goes over that 250, that's where we say stop. So we're talking about area median income, which is an important feature of this program and something we'll need to consider. So the city of Carver is substantially higher than Carver County and the state of Minnesota, which is interesting. I think something we all anecdotally know and something we know through the Housing Action Plan. But something to keep in mind is that it's largely... It's a more affluent community just based on area median income, so something to think about. So let's talk specifics, what these numbers look like for real-world terms. So anytime someone joins a connection, so if it's a single-family home or an apartment, they're required to pay connection fees. So for our 2022 fee schedule, that's $980 per unit for sewer. So just to connect to our sewer system, it's $980. To connect to our water system, it's $8,900. So if you're doing that for one home, not a big deal. It's built into the building permit. If you're doing that for 100 units of an apartment, it starts to get pretty expensive pretty fast. So keep those numbers in mind. Also note that we anticipate these numbers increase every year. So 2022, this is what the numbers are. If it was 2023, we'd be using different numbers. Something else to think about is that the Met Council also has a connection fee. We call it the SAC connection fee, which is $2,485 per unit. We can't waive that. We're the pass-through, so we take the money, give it directly to Met Council. So we're not talking about that connection at all tonight.
Erin?
Yeah?
Is that connection, just go back, is that connection then inside that 8,900?
It's not.
It's completely outside of everything?
It is, yes. So let's talk through what that means for area median income and the fee waiver. So typically, we break down area median income starting at 30%. So if someone makes 30% of the area median income, they would be required then to pay 30% of the sewer and water connections. So for the city of Carver, with our area median income of about $1,500,000, a household would be, would need to be making about $35,000 per year, per household, to qualify at this, the equation at 30%. So what that means, sewer drops from 980 to 294. Water drops from 8,900 to 2,670. So it's 30% of those two numbers. Same with 31 to 50% of area median income. So we took it at 50, so the highest number there, so half. So 490 for sewer, 4,450 for water. So area median income there is about $57,000 per household. And then 51 to 80. So again, we took the higher number, the 80. So you'll pay 80% of the sewer connection fee and the water connection fee, so 784, and 7,120. And this one kind of blows my mind because it feels so high, but our AMI is so high. So it's $92,000, $92,000 per year. So thinking about that number, you would pay 80% of those connection fees. So a quick breakdown. I'll run through the rest of the slides and then we can talk through some of the nuances that work. So this is my new slide. I maybe did it too fast. I hate that Lynn is in this room, probably thinking math right now.
Except I'm super happy to have you on board.
Yes, for sure. Don't check my numbers. So, and a applicable example that is really close to home for all of us is Carverage. So as part of that TIF agreement, they needed to require affordable housing to make the TIF work. So 20%, 20% of their units have to be at 50% or less of the area median income. So that's 14 units. They have 70 units total. 20% of that is 14. So what that would have meant in today's numbers, their sewer and water, if they came in with the 70 units, they would pay $68,600. Water, $623,000. So with the rebate, you can see the sewer and water at 54, and then the sewer and water with that rebate for the 14 units. So in total, for sewer, they would have saved about $7,000. With water, about $80,000. So in total, they could have applied for this rebate and saved roughly $87,000 with those 14 units being at 50% or less. I press next, but I'm too scared to press it again. We're going to give it a second?
While we're here?
Yeah.
So the sewer at 54 units, that's kind of full price, if you will?
Correct.
Okay. And then the 14, 20% of that?
Oh, it's 56. It's 50... Oh, no. Pause. Where is it? Oh. We're just going to do that quick. So it's 56 plus 14 equals 70, not 54. That's my first mistake found.
Harry, what country that is not the US is where your... Did you get your graduate's degree from?
My master's is from the UK. If anyone knows where Cardiff is, it's Cardiff University.
Sounds like Carver.
It does. That was good. That's the Harvard of the Midwest.
Okay, we're coming back. Okay. Courtney, did you have a question about this one specifically?
No, I think you answered it.
Okay. Just a little nervous. Nothing's happening? Shoot.
Must not like your numbers.
Something.
Can I ask this? So they got a TIF district, right?
They did.
Instead, do we know what the savings was for? Because they would have paid less taxes, right? Do we know what the equivalent would have been?
Yeah, so they, they pay the same amount of taxes.
Okay.
This is the, in a TIF district, the taxes are collected.
Yes.
And essentially placed into a different fund and then put towards whatever the TIF is funding. So they pay the same amount. And I think the, their TIF district is like 20 years.
Okay.
So their, their taxes will pay for the incremental difference between the baseline of that property prior to the development occurring and then what the development is at now. So let's just say it was a dollar and now it's $10. That $9 difference is captured.
Okay.
Over the course of that 20 years. So then this, if they would have applied for that, this program, this would have been in addition to that.
Got it.
And can we do tips in general for residential development? Or was because that's kind of a system of living?
I missed the first part, sorry.
Can we generally do TIFs for residential development?
You... So it has to be an affordable component. You can't do a tax increment just for market rate residential.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, nobody move too quickly and hopefully I'll stay logged in.
Okay.
So talking through what this would look like. So the sample we're going to work through is 50 units of affordable housing across the three different tiers. So 50% of affordable housing, if you make 80% of the area median income, which is about that $92,000 a year, Met Council's still required, always required. We're pass-through only. So for that, it would be about $125,000. For the city, no rebate, $49,000 for sewer, $445,000 for water, and then the city rebate. So savings in total overall would be $98,300. So does not meet that 250 cutoff, so they could get the full rebate benefit. Yeah, it's going to go again. Are you, are you in the cloud?
Yeah, I'm copying it onto a...
Okay.
I have it saved on the shared drive. Yep, I'm copying it onto a flash drive. Oh, if you want to do it from my computer. Well, I can hang on to my computer. Let's do that.
Yes, because Erin seems unreliable at this point.
Yeah.
Is it supposed to be magnetic?
Maybe they need me over there.
Is it your magnetic personality, Lynn?
That's one of the problems. I figured yours out.
Yep, it is. Should quit while you're ahead today.
Mayor and Council, if you want, if you want, we can hit pause on this and go to the employee survey.
Sure.
And just circle back.
Let's, let's do that. Let's put a pin in that and then we'll circle back.
Actually, we, what might be more apropos is the city manager's report. I know Chad's ready to give a RACIO program update. Chad, do you want to come up, please?
Handouts? Oh, pretty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just giving you an update on the RACIO smart irrigation controller. So just a little history behind it. In August of 2021, we dedicated $1,000 to the RACIO smart controller program in cooperation with Carver County. So the city would basically subsidize $20 of each smart controller that was purchased by Carver resident. And then also the partnership with the RACIO in Carver County also reduced the pricing of each unit. So the goal of the program was to reduce the cost of the controller and in turn to reduce amount of water used to irrigate lawns. So a little bit behind the RACIO controller, it basically provides smart watering technology that enables the user to control sprinklers from anywhere on their mobile device. They can calculate when and how long to run their sprinklers. Controllers use predictive schedules that adjust to local weather conditions. And again, the goal of this program is to decrease the use of water through better management of irrigation practices. 2021, we sold nine controllers. I think due to the late start, middle of the summer, and the lack of marketing materials contributed to that. So there's a balance of $820 left over in that RACIO budget. And we're currently working on the agreement with Carver County. Do we want to keep at the same numbers? Do $20 per controller for Carver residents? We'd have about, what would that be, 41 controllers? That would still be available for sale.
Are you, do you need an answer?
Yes. Yes, please.
I don't know. I think $20 is sufficient.
Yes, and let's keep it going.
Okay.
Yeah, because I agree with you. You know, we did get kind of a late start, so starting it earlier, hopefully this year.
Right, and the marketing...
More participation, yeah.
Correct. And the marketing materials, they showed up today. That's just the postcard.
Okay.
That Carver County sent me, so...
Is this, is Carver County going to send these out? Do we have to send these out? Is it a postcard to go to mail?
I got 50 of them.
Oh.
From the county, so I would assume it would just be maybe sitting on the front desk here at City Hall.
Okay.
But this is something that we can definitely do as a, as a mailer. Put them in, you know, the utility billing.
Yeah, we can get a JPEG of it and just put it in the city newsletter.
Okay. Does anybody feel differently about changing that $20 amount?
No.
I have one question on the price. There's the range, $50 to $80, other different models? Or we did not really set on what the...
Last year, last year, there was... The partnership with RACIO in Carver County, it reduced it already. So they're already getting a discount. And then the city would contribute another $20 to it. So really, there's only two types of controllers, the eight-zone and the 16-zone. So if you have a bigger yard and you want more zones, or you have, you know, shrubs that you want to specifically water more, you can have more zones. So the resident has the option to buy either controller.
All right. Thank you for the update.
My pleasure.
Do you have what you need from us?
I do.
Great.
Thank you, Chad.
All right, thank you.
All right.
We're back and we're offline.
Okay.
So it should be better.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's keep, keep talking through. We just did the 50 units at 80%. So at 50%, household income of $57,000. Again, Met Council, no change. We still have to do that same fee. Total rebate running through the numbers at 50% area median income. Total rebate would be $247,000. So getting close to that 250, have not surpassed it. Probably would be the best deal available if you could get that close without going over. So 50 units at 50% gets pretty close to the 250 total rebate. And 30%, so you're making 30% of the area median income of that $115,000. So your household income is right around $35,000 per household, remember, not per person. Met Council, again, you have to pay it, no questions asked. So savings through 30% exceeds that maximum rebate of $250,000. So over $311,000 would be saved with this rebate program if there was no limit. But again, we had that cap written into our policy that would say 250 is your maximum available. So let's talk through questions that you have about the examples, see if there's anything we can hash through and start talking next steps.
Right. Questions?
Is, is the intent on the last page here for the program, you've got all of them listed, 30, 50, and then 51 to 80, is the intent to have that as an option? Or like all three of them? Or pick and choose, have one? I mean, what are you, what was your intent for the votes?
So I think it would be developer-driven. So if someone came in with a project and they knew they could do 10 units at 80%, they could apply for this rebate program. So we wouldn't require it unless they were moving forward with also a TIF district, which has an affordability component. But it would be largely developer-driven. Should they want to move forward with affordable units, we wouldn't require them to. But to get this rebate, they would have to have affordable units.
Right, so we're looking to have all these options? Maybe I'm...
All of them available.
Available, okay.
So if a developer came in, we could say, these, this is the tiered system.
Yeah.
Where do your units fit? So they wouldn't have to have five at 30, five at 50, five at 80. They could pick and choose that they want to hit one of those levels or all three.
Okay. So we're looking at the one where, I mean, obviously the most money is being waived. What does that look like for us going forward as for budgeting-wise, Brett? I mean, when we're looking at all these fees that we would normally collect.
Hang it up, before I get to like the specifics, I'm gonna punt to, to Dave, just to kind of share kind of thoughts on kind of planning for this and kind of how it's considered from a big picture perspective.
Sure. And some of it's hard because you don't know how many people are gonna take advantage of it, or developers are gonna take advantage of it. But as you know, the city, this was fairly recently, I think, adopted its, its long-term plan for how to pay for utilities and how you're gonna grow and all kinds of things. Into account what we're talking about here in that sewer and water connection fees. And, you know, staff can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of that planning takes into account the fact that these sorts of goals are really important for the city. And, you know, included in both your comp plan and your, your long-term goals. And so I think part of your question is, Christie, is, is you can plan for only so much as you can plan for. There's gonna be some difficult, you just can't project who's gonna take advantage of this and who isn't. I think part of that is where the maximum or the cap comes in. Obviously, if a developer came in and wanted to put in, you know, hundreds of affordable units, they're not gonna be able to exceed the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. So my guess is the planning that's gone into all the connection charges and how to pay for these things has taken into account a way to absorb some of these, some of these fee waivers that may or may not happen. And whether they're happening is gonna be completely market-driven. Developers, when they think about projects, they look at what kind of assistance is available to see if the project is feasible. They put together what's called a pro forma and they decide, does it make sense for us? And they'll, you know, play with the numbers and see what sorts of, of assistance they might get, whether it's through TIF or whether it's through a fee waiver. And then they'll make a determination about feasibility overall and come forward with a proposal. So hopefully that gives an idea about how, how people, developers have to think about it, how staff is to think about it. And I, I assume a lot of this stuff is already wrapped into the city's utility plan and that sort of thing.
I would say for about, it's harder to talk about this when you know somebody knows a lot of math in the room, so.
Thirty-three percent, isn't it?
Thirty-three percent. As you know, you know, there is, our long-term financial plan is tens of millions, you know, maybe even close to a hundred million dollars worth of projects. And so depending upon how many applications you get, the impact will be on kind of a sliding scale. If you had one project of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years or ten years, you're gonna see a, a marginal increase to your overall connection fees to kind of absorb that. But if it gets to a point where you're doing, you know, three or four waiver programs like this a year, then you might have to step back and say, well, how is this impacting the long-term financial plan and our connection fees in general? So a lot of it is speculative, but from the, kind of the initial, it gets, it'll be absorbed within the long-term financial plan and then impacted through fees at some point, depending upon the amounts.
I have one more thing, if that's okay. This largely doesn't apply for single-family housing, so it'd be multifamily housing, senior only, not only, but single-family doesn't come in affordable. I haven't seen it, I think, ever in my life. So something to think about is our comp plan, too. So thinking about those areas, we have guided for medium or high density. In Carver, it's not a lot, we have a lot of single-family. So I wouldn't say that we'll have projects knocking down our door next year to do this, just because that's not the market in Carver right now. It continues to be single-family with a flair of townhome right now, with Timber Creek coming in. So something to think about, it's largely going to be a bunch of some sort workforce or senior.
And it would also be limited to rentals. Because we couldn't do the monitoring for twenty years if it was a for-sale type situation.
Kind of condo, I guess.
Right, it would have to be a rental where they can control the rent.
Yes.
And just as an aside, or not an aside, but Lynn, if you have anything, not that you need to, but if there's something that's coming up for you that you want to share, I know it's just your, I know it's your first day, but you can just jump right in and say. Hold on.
So do we have anything for minimum or max units for the building?
We don't know.
And then Brett, you brought up a, another question when you said, well, let's say we had five of them and we want to reevaluate. What does that look like to say, well, we had it for this lawn, you want to come in next, but now you can't? Because we decided it doesn't work for us, it doesn't fit our long-range plan any longer? How do we turn the clocks back on that?
I think you can, as long as you have a coordinated process. There are, you know, a number of subsidy programs that cities get into and then just based on costs they get out of. I would say that we're, just based on our kind of trajectory for planning and what our comp plan says, we're not gonna have a lot of these. I mean, and I think it kind of speaks, I mean, this is looked at as an incentive for affordable housing because, but for some of these subsidies, they just don't happen. I mean, if you look at even how Carver Crossing was constructed from a financial perspective, that project doesn't happen without the tax credits that they get from MFHA, the, the livable communities grant that the city got through the Met.
Allergies.
Through the, through the Met Council. So it's a, it's a real big financial undertaking. And I'm not familiar with really any affordable housing projects that occur without any, some sort of public subsidy. So and then just based on their available land for that type of housing, you're just, I probably overstated the four to five. You're probably looking at, you know, one every five years if, if you're lucky enough to, to get projects like that. Because it's just, it's just not happening at the rate. It's kind of a, if you kind of read on the topic, you know, cities throughout the state and the country are trying to solve this affordable housing problem in their committees. And I don't know if this was an anecdote that Erin was gonna share, but we, we met with the representative for United Properties and, you know, they've talked to a number of, I would call, service industries, restaurants, et cetera. And one of their main concerns, frankly, is they think they could do well in Carver. They don't know if they can find employees to staff their businesses. And so I think it's kind of a real-life kind of, when I heard that, I was like, oh, yeah. I mean, I can't think of anybody, you know, in my neighborhood or surrounding neighborhoods that is looking for that type of work, other than like high school students. And so I think there's a benefit to kind of diversifying our housing stocks so that people of kind of all different incomes and means can, can live in a community. You don't just have to buy a, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house to live in Carver, so.
After the twenty years, or before the twenty years, what's the checks and balances on this? Like, how do we know that someone hasn't turned it into something else? Like, who's monitoring, how's that getting monitored?
Sure. So like the TIF district for Carver Ridge, they have to send us a report every year that certifies that the, the correct number of units continue to be affordable. So Dave and I would probably work through what a formal reporting process would be, but not out of the purview of what we do right now for other affordable projects.
And I'd add, I mean, like Erin says, there might be a situation where they're taking advantage of both TIF and this program. So there could already be a built-in reporting requirement. If they're not doing that, we would, it would look very similar to that. And Erin touched on the fact that there's gonna be a document or a declaration recorded against the parcel that imposes that reporting requirement. And the way we would have the language drawn up is that if they fail to meet the reporting requirements and say, this is how many units are being occupied by, you know, folks that meet these, these income thresholds. If they fail to meet those requirements, that's considered a violation of the declaration. And you then go back and recover whatever amounts, you know, on a prorata basis, based on how many years it took them to come out of compliance, that number that you gave them at the front for a, for a subsidy or for a fee waiver. So it's, it's a long-term reporting requirement that staff would just have to keep track of.
Okay, so my last question then is, so when we're looking at the three options here, what, what if we just say, well, this one is just giving me too much, right? So is, is it set up that we could pick two of the three, you know, if we wanted and, or one of the three and didn't have to go for the, run the whole gamut?
I think so, yeah.
I think we answered all of my questions. You know, I like that we're setting a maximum on this because that helps us put some controls around it, right? I think Brett, your comments about us having one opportunity every several years is probably accurate. So if we do have one of these opportunities and we move forward and we spend money and then we start to look at rates and we go, ooh, wow, we gotta kind of increase our rates or whatever, and another developer comes in, well, then we can make that call, rather if we want to invest additionally, or if we want to say, hey, we hit our limit right now, we gotta do some budgeting a couple more years and we might relaunch this program, right? So I feel like we have good stops in place with what you've proposed here. I like the options that we're giving the developer here about the different levels that they feel comfortable with. I'm guessing a variety of developers have different comfort levels on, you know, what kind of product that they'd like to build and what they, what rebates they're interested in doing, so I like that we're allowing some flexibility as well. So I feel like we gotta start somewhere, so thank you for putting this together.
True.
Yeah, I have a question. And I, I like that this is a tool that is tangible, like something that I could see getting utilized. My question is, so if a developer comes in with something and they want it to be, have different phases in their project? Like three phases, like what we've seen in some of the residential? Would this be then three projects? Or is it, is that maximum limit applied to developer?
So the connection fees are paid at the time of building permit. So if they wanted to come in for three twenty-unit buildings, we would do, if it was three units of the twenty that are affordable, we would permit the three each time it comes in for permit. So it could be phased.
But they wouldn't be able to like double it or like.
No, they wouldn't be able, yeah.
Find another way to.
Right, they wouldn't be able to exceed the two fifty over an entire project. I see what you're saying.
Thank you, that was my question.
Most of my questions were answered, except for a definition under bullet point number three for the city Carver housing goals. Can somebody explain to me what safe housing at every price point means?
I would say housing that is safe in terms of construction, so that they're in a place where they're not in disrepair.
But this would be all new construction, correct?
It would, yes, but part of the, that comes from the housing action plan. So the overarching document has that language in it.
All right.
You good, Glenn?
It's a great non-answer for.
Oh, well, so I don't think we're.
No, I.
It's fair, I mean, ask questions as you have them, but we.
I'm fine with the numbers and everything like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I like this a lot, I think it completes our goals. I like the, the flexibility, I think kind of to what both Christie and Joy mentioned. I want to make sure that there's a little bit of may language.
Sure.
In here in terms of, you know, to kind of say, worst-case scenario is kind of best-case scenario, right? Like, we get a bunch of projects that come through and it's just a little too much all at one time or outside of our comfort level. So I think probably something that would make us less liable to having to do this every single time. Give us a little bit more.
Give us an out.
Yeah. Or if it's just too much.
So yes, we could do all that, and so I would say, once we, we'd probably want to build in like an annual, like, adoption process.
Yeah.
I think we'll run into some issues if we do a project in January and then someone comes along in July and we say, well, we'll have to let you know if you're gonna be eligible. I think if you're concerned about volume, we can set up, whether it's every annually or every two years or three years, a process to affirm that you want to continue the program. That's not a problem. I think making it sound like we're gonna provide it on a case-by-case basis, based on our financial position at that certain time, I think opens up a can of worms and some unintended consequences. But I think if we do it on a coordinated basis, just like with any grant or aid or subsidy program, council set up policies to, to review, I think we can do that.
Okay. Great. And I don't know if another option would be to say it's a max rebate of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per project? Or, you know, whatever that number is per year, five hundred thousand dollars a year, a million dollars a year, you know, whatever that might be. So I don't know if that would make us.
To, to instead of.
I thought of that, too.
No. So the maximum per project is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And then we set a maximum per year of five hundred thousand dollars? That means we could do two projects.
I thought of that, too, very closely. The one thing, though, is I don't like things that are like first come, first served. Don't want to, okay, you know, if somebody, you know, gets through the process sooner.
I don't mind that, what if it becomes a hot commodity?
I actually.
Competition's good.
Yeah, I actually agree with Lori. I'd rather review it on an annual basis, at least that makes me comfortable to say we can gauge where we're at. And then you'll know what's come in, and then things change. I mean, we're looking at a long-term plan, we don't know what's coming.
Yeah.
You know, so that will give us a better handle. That would make me feel.
That's fine, I was just throwing that out there. I got married to that idea.
And we review our connection fees annually. Yeah, that makes sense, right? That's our, kind of our budget, right?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay. So I think, and council, I think if I'm wrong, but I think I hear us saying in that slide, we want to send this to a regular meeting? Yeah. Do you have anything from us on this?
I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item number four, the draft employee survey. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you remember, part of our strategic plan was to conduct an employee survey. One of the things is just to promote employee retention and kind of find out what we don't know about kind of our operation and how we're working with our team. And so with the help of the department heads, we've put together two draft surveys, one for our full-time team and one for our part-time team. So we have the drafts together. I think one of the things that's really critical to this is, one, to establish the baseline. So, you know, making sure that even though we don't necessarily are gonna be taking this to a regular meeting for approval of the questions, we want your feedback, because we want to use these same questions every year so that we can track that data. Are we going up or down in a certain area? And if we continually change those questions, that data will be harder to track. And then two is a coordinated, or a coordinated and an intentional action plan. So once we get these results, we'd meet with our leadership team and say, okay, what are these results telling us? And then create an action plan to address deficiencies or, and highlight areas that we maybe are doing well and to try to find out more. The survey tool would be a, a common internet survey tool with the ability of the survey to be taken anonymously by the employee. So again, there's a full-time survey and then the part-time, which is primarily for the fire department. So happy to answer any questions or talk about any specific questions or additions, deletions that you'd recommend.
Sure.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Seriously, it all looks fine. Well, this was something that I have talked about for a few years, so I'm really excited to see this happening. I, when looking through the questions, I think most of them look fantastic. On the full-time employee one, I was looking at number nine, and that one also might be on the part-time. But it says, my supervisor is respectful to me and others and acts in ethical fashion. Both important, I'm not sure if it's the same question. So maybe those need to be separated out into two questions there. And then on the part-time one, number four says, I feel comfortable contributing ideas and opinions. I like that question a lot. I don't see that one in the full-time, but it might be enough. Do we find it enough under something else?
Number eight.
Number eight, yeah.
My supervisor is approachable and open to hearing my perspectives.
Okay, yeah, that can cover it then, okay, sounds good. I just noticed that wasn't the same. But yeah, for me, a number nine on this one, and I'm not sure if the same question is in the, is in the part-time one, I would prefer that those be separated into two separate things.
Glenn? Lori? No questions, Lori? The only thing that I noticed was on the part-time, question number fourteen, the city provides a competitive benefits package. Do we offer benefits to part-timers?
Yeah, well, not in the traditional sense, but benefits as related to their relief association and retirement. So it's not.
Uh huh, okay.
Health and dental, but it's, there are, there are benefits.
Maybe we should spell that out a little bit more, because I, I would hate to score poorly and have somebody be like, I'm not getting benefits from this job.
Right.
Sure. Well, let's add retirement benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah, or even if it's. If applicable, something.
Yeah. 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 That's all I had. Otherwise, I think this looks good. Alright, um, city manager's report. Do you have anything else for that?
I don't have any additional items, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, city council requests? Oh, let's see, sorry, Lori, adopt a storm drain program.
Yes, um, I had mentioned it to Brent and Erin that I had, like, seen some things of that idea where there was a community engagement and you could adopt a gutter near your home or maybe a path you walk by. And when you see, you know, debris, pick it up. And then also maybe just, you know, certain times of the year when you know, you know, there's just more, whether it be the sand or leaves, um, you would, um, pick it. So there, uh, then Erin helped me out and she, uh, sent me a link, which is on the Packet website and, um, program. More than one state, Minnesota's one of the states. And so I put my address in and then I think there's another adopted drain, Johnson, four. Yeah, it seemed, um, something worth looking further into. I couldn't at first find many Carver ones. But, uh, I just needed my email, I didn't have to put my phone number. I recommend maybe talking to your household before, just signing them up and calling it, um, Sayor Family.
I take it you put Sayor Family?
I did, I did. I thought of one thing, um, that maybe, you know, other residents might ask if it's something that we promote, is, um, what do you do with what you find? You know, I have a spot where I can dump some extra sand, but I know we don't really have, you know, somewhere where people can bring their lawn, you know, yard debris, you know, if there's a lot of clippings. And then you decide how often you wanna report. So I put mine as quarterly, so every three months I could say, oh, I got a five-gallon bucket or full. And then that's kind of what this program does is they keep track of how much did we keep out of our stormwater, you know, the creeks down to the river too. So it's, yeah.
Who puts it on? I'm sorry, who is this put on by? Just adopt a storm drain.
Yeah, their address is St. Paul and then, um, I don't, I would think that they're...
That was Gus Davis or something.
It was by Hamlin because then there's a whole...
There's Hamlin, yeah.
They've adopted a lot of their own, um, messages.
So when council members here brought this up, who looked at maybe other, some other cities that maybe had a similar program and then found this website. So it'd be, at least the way that we're thinking about it, it is, is just more or less advertising this to residents as an opportunity, um, to kind of pitch in, if you will. And I would tend to think that, you know, most of the time on a storm drain, it's, uh, gonna be a small enough amount that someone can just throw into their residential container. If by happenstance there's like a tree or something, we'll get Chad to come down there.
Really?
Yes.
Put his Paul Bunyan uniform on and cut it up, so. But I, it certainly, I, when council member Sayor mentioned this, had thought, you know, we can put it on the council requests and make sure the rest of the council's all on board and we can start, um, advertising this for, via social media and our website, et cetera, if it's okay with the council. Is that what you were thinking?
Yes. Chad, do you have any issues with this when it comes to city operations?
No, I think it would be a good educational piece for, for residents as well.
Okay.
Just that this goes along for everyone.
And we have done, Brenda, I think we've done some messaging about this in the newsletter, but more in the context of in the winter and uncover your storm drains, right?
Correct. Water management plans and all those messages.
Yeah.
And more of a clear it out so that when things start melting, the water can get there. Yeah, I have no issues with this.
Right.
No issues, yeah. Alright, for sure.
Can I, can you scroll on to the bottom of this page, please?
Well, excuse me, council member Henry, while you're doing that, just got a text from a resident. They're having a hard time hearing the council. So if you could make sure your microphones are on and in front of you, thank you.
Is this better? When I look at this, leaves, grass and dirt usually goes to compost anyway. In most, in most cases.
It does when I rake it from my yard, but I don't typically go out in the street. So this is making me go clean it from there.
Okay, and then the third bullet, there's dog poop carries harmful bacteria. I think everybody knows this. And don't we have our stations strategically placed around the city? When I go for my walks and stuff, there is dog poop everywhere. I wish people would actually clean up their dog poop. It's a problem and I see people just let their dogs run out, go poop, come back in, put them on a leash, go. I see it all the time, especially on Sixth Street. And I know that that does get into our drains. When it comes around to Sixth Street, there's a lot of drains on that street. And when we get serious rains, I'm not gonna call Chad at one o'clock in the morning and say, hey, I just take my chainsaw out or what I need to do and go get it out of there right away just for the simple sake of cleaning out the drains so we get the water, get the flow. I think a lot of common sense could enter into this if people, I don't need somebody patting me on the back when I go out and do something like that. It's just one of those common sense things that you do, just FYI. But if people wanna sign up for a drain, knock themselves out.
So since you brought up, you know, the stations for the pet waste, do we, with the Sixth Street, I know we're gonna talk about that at the regular meeting, do we need to think about expanding those, right? Cause we put in a certain number of them. I think, I don't remember the exact that we actually put in.
Was it five or six?
We budgeted for it. Do we need to consider adding some because we're, as we do with Sixth Street?
And even down here, not just Sixth Street, like gazebo park would be an excellent place to have one.
Okay. I see this as another council request.
I wrote down in my notes to get you a count on how many bags we've used so far.
Yes, okay.
So I think it was five.
And remind us where they are and then...
Alright, we'll tag team it.
There's one in Depot Park. There's one at the top of Spring Creek Drive. There's one in Ironwood Park, top of the levee.
And Broadway. And Community Park.
Yeah, I think what we can do is come back with a report and maybe some suggestions for some additional locations.
You don't wanna just sit here, we don't wanna talk about dog football night?
Nope. Let's, let's do that.
Let's move on.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any other, uh, council communications, council requests?
No.
No. Alright, um, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign. Motion passes. Alright, we'll see you at seven.